Counselors could take their seats.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chase had the floor when we had recessed. You were still on that WPCA discussion?
Yeah, right. So, I think that discussion's over at this point.
Mr. Chase has the floor.
Just so we can make those cleanup changes, Tina, do you want to make those changes real quick?
I just have one question.
Mr. Chase, are you yielding the floor?
I'm yielding it to...
I have one question for Mr. Chase, who's, you know, he handed over some of his stuff as well to double check. You have one thing, 0021, and I'm not sure what you meant by it, so I don't want to misread it. Should it be, should it be 0021 instead, or 65000221?
No, it's 0221.
Instead of 6500, or in addition to 6500? Because it's capital, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I got them all, then that's yours. Okay, the following changes on the first page, items...
I'm sorry, are you introducing an amendment?
I'd like to introduce an amendment to amend the current item, 6, I'm sorry, 29929.
Second.
Wait, what?
I thought you were...
I have to introduce it?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to know what I'm gonna do?
Yeah, I do.
All right. We're going out drinking later, I promise. 6229, 69929, 6055. Expenditures on page 1, 29929, 6, the current one says 6055, it should be 6051, 401A pension. 29929, 6051, it's the very first thing, railroad, okay? Down the page, last EMS item, 43943, the item should read 6051 EMS, 401K EMS. The next item is 389386, I'm sorry, 65000221, capital equipment CEP. On page 3, we did page 2 altogether. On page 3, we are creating an item in...
Public Works.
0125, I'm sorry, 01201, 6055, employee benefits EMS. That, I believe, is created by, that has to be a created account, because things are moving over there. 01201, 01251, 6005, employee benefits. Down the line, 01251, 6005...
Can I just interrupt? Read the, it's 012...
251.
01251.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
6055.
6055.
Employee benefits EMS.
EMS.
You say you're creating a line, is that a line?
Pension?
Is that a line that is not in the budget?
Yes, it's being created, that's why you can't find it.
Now, you're putting anything into that line?
Uh, no. It's, well, it was put in, and now there's a reduction. Mr. Khan can speak to it, because that was one of his corrections.
For clarity, if you're making a line, if you're adding a line to the budget and not putting anything into it, why are you adding a line?
Because these accounts have to be added in order to reconcile the accounts, to separate. Mr. Khan, can I yield the floor to you to explain about the EMS creation accounts, 6055?
No, you can yield back to me, and I'd be happy to yield...
You know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just leave those employee benefits alone right now.
Why don't you skip that one and do your other amendment?
I'm sorry, this, Mr. Leclerc, I believe she is making a motion, we shouldn't be interrupting somebody while they're making a motion. I've been waiting to do that.
Thank you, Beth. 01305.
Whatever you want.
I'm sorry. 01305, 6003, tax collector, it shouldn't say salaries regular, it should say payroll regular. At the top of the page, the line reads 01151, it should actually read 01201, 6741, debt retirement, capital improvement bond VSCIP. Okay, so it should be 01201, 6741, that's the second item down. Going back to tax collector. 01305, 6102, tax collector, printing and stationary, that's correct. Tax collector's correct. The next one is recreation, 01353, it reads 6019, it should read 6004, recreation. And that's other custodians, okay? Excuse me? 6, it says 6004 in the budget.
I'm sorry, there's no discussion during, while somebody's making a motion, especially from the audience.
Okay, so, we have a disagreement, that's all right. I'm Italian, we can handle it. God love my mother, I wish she was alive to see this, she would be laughing.
It's part of the motion.
Um, hang on. Let's find recreation, we can settle it once and for all. The problem is, is that when things were spread out, there was, in an attempt to be efficient, they listed what everything was.
Ms. Manis, I'm sorry, you're in the middle of making a motion.
I know, Beth, it's too complicated, I'm trying to clarify. Payroll part-time custodians, it says 6004. Payroll other says community calendar, day passes, beaches, 1015. All right, so if it's, that is correct, actually, sorry, I, it's 01353, 6019, sorry, Mr. Chase, that one is correct. 6019, that's payroll other custodians. Just payroll other, but I guess the department head was mentioning what it would be.
What page are you on?
Uh, page 3. 01358, 6432, economic development, it's just a change in the label, it shouldn't say community services, it should say community events. 01403, 6020, PW building maintenance, it should say payroll overtime, as it does, and it should have in parentheses, includes custodians. 01405, 6213, Public Works Highway, it says materials other, it should say highways materials. On page 4...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last one?
Sure. 01405, it says...
Wait, wait, one second.
It says 619...
Just wait, Mr. Paul's switching a tape. Okay.
Yeah. 01405, it currently says 6199, it should be 6213, Public Works Highway. And it says material other, it's actually highway materials. The next one is 01406, 6216, the numbers are correct, it's Public Works Garage, but it should say garage supplies, not supplies. In 0134 down, it says 01407, the number is 6020, it's actually 6157, and that is gas and oil correctly labeled. 01407, next line, it says 6020, it should actually be 6218. That's an error, so 6020 becomes 6218. Down two, three lines from there, 0...
Is that tree removal?
Yep, tree removal.
Police will say it all.
0146, tree removal, 01463, 6003, FD fire prevention. It should say payroll regular, but that item was eliminated, but I wanted to correct it in everyone's markings. So that item is no change, but it should have said payroll regular. So that was what was...
It's not part of the amendment.
It's not part of the general amendment, but there was no change, but it was an error. 01474, 6003, police patrol, it should say payroll regular, not parking authority, parking authority is a part of that, but it should say payroll regular, to be clear. 01475, 6004, communication center, it should say payroll part-time, not just part-time. 01478, 6061, police professional standards, this was taken out of the budget, it's not part of the amendment, however, it said part-time, it should say education, so if you want to correct your stuff, but there was no change to that line item. Going back to the items on page 3. There are a number of accounts that were created in order to provide the fun, the funding place for EMS and railroad. So those employee benefit line items that were created were 01251, 6055, employee benefits, pension 401K EMS assigned. Okay, and social security and Medicare are the same, 6052, and then health insurance, and health insurance are 6053, 6053, those were already in. Okay, so that's how that works. Below those, 01251, you've got 6055 and 6055, 01251, 6055 again for the 401K EMS. And then 01251, 6055, 401 railroad. These were read correctly into the amendment, the earlier one was the only one that was the error, but people are, you know, some of the corrections that I received, people had questions about this, so I did speak to Mr. Khan, and he said that they were...
They're making a motion, let's stop.
So, that is my motion, I believe that includes every correction, including all of the errors that I saw in labeling, and that is... Full. Thank you.
I, um...
Give me for a second.
Second.
Wait, this, okay, I would like to be able to, so Mr. Farrington Posner seconded the motion. This is an occasion where the chair is unable to repeat that motion, I just do not have that capacity to repeat that motion. So if anybody needs clarification on what they're voting on, I'm afraid I cannot give it currently. Okay, all in favor of the proposed amendments as read?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Mr., I did not hear Mr. Khan or Mr. Young voice in opinion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm opposed, so that passes nine to one. Any other discussion on this amendment as amended? We voted on the amendment, yes?
I'm just picking up on the WPCA conversation.
Okay, Mr. Khan, you're recognized.
Thank you. Critical, you know, when we look at the consultant's report that the WPCA hired that study for, as Mr. Chase read, it used the words "it may show", if you do an audit of the in-kind services, it may show that the WPCA owes more money than it's currently paying. In actuality, it showed that the WPCA was overpaying. I've spent four months or so, on and off, working with our new finance officer and with Chris Timiak, they did an inventory of all the departments, there was only three revisions between, quote, "my view" and "their view". One was that, they said the CIO's office spent 23% of their time on WPCA. On reflection, they said it's probably more likely 10% of their time. You think of all the stuff that the CIO does in terms of operating the town, so that's a $30,000 difference. The human resource department, they said, spent 11% of their time on WPCA, but there's only 17 employees in WPCA, there's like, what, 500 employees in the town? So the allocation isn't 11%, as was originally put in, it's really 3% of HR time, and that was a difference of 50. The third difference is, WPCA was already paying its own workman's comp. The allocation recharged WPCA for $170,000. So you take out that 30, the 50, and the double charge for workman's comp, you get up to that 278 number, which is depreciation. So what the consultant said, "it may show", in this case, it showed that WPCA was overpaying for those three specific reasons. That was the point I wanted to make and...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kadim?
Yes, online item 01106, 6003, registrar of voters, payroll reduction, I mean, excuse me, payroll regular, it was 20,000 taken out, and I spoke to you about that. And the motion to put it back, anyone second that for me?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Those in favor of putting the 20,000 back in the...
I think, but now there's discussion on that.
Oh, not so.
Okay, any discussion?
What is the 20,000 for?
It was taking it out of, it was pay... Sorry, through the chair, is all right? I'll respond. It took 20,000 out of there.
Out of payroll.
Quite naturally, for me, the public, you know, registrar's office, they do all the hard work, I don't understand how you take somebody's salary and drop it down 20,000 when you're accustomed to living a certain, I just felt that it should be put down.
No, I understand the question, can I respond to that?
Yes, Mr. Chase?
We're only going by the number that was in Mr. Khan's Monday night proposal, who got that from Pat Petuski, the director.
I think we're talking about registrar of voters.
Oh, the regis, what should we talk, registrar of voters?
Registrar of voters.
He'd like to restore the registrar vote out.
Okay, so there, any more discussion on this?
Yes. I just have one question. If we restore that money, is there still going to be $37,000 worth of games of solitaire happening in that office on the computer? Because three times I've walked into the registrar's office, and I've seen an assistant playing solitaire at different hours of the day. So is that what the taxpayers are paying for, is for people to play solitaire on a computer? Because I don't support that. You know, it's one of those offices that we have four full-time people in, making, getting, wait, benefits, including their salary, full benefits. And it's an office that we don't need four full-time people, as you look at surrounding municipalities, they have part-time registrars. We have two full-time registrars and two full-time assistants. And when I gotta walk in that office and I can see one of the assistants playing solitaire multiple occasions, that I have a problem with. Especially when we're looking to do a mill rate increase from four counselors up here. I think when you need to cut, you need to see which departments are running efficiently and which departments aren't. And for the amount of salaries they're getting, I say playing solitaire in an office is not being efficient.
Ready for the question?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harden?
Really quickly, we all use the registrar of voters' office when we run our campaigns, they're very, they have tons of information for us at hand. And I think we all are guilty of playing solitaire while we're at work, and if you're not, so be it. Now we're getting into what we're starting to nitpick. So let's move forward, and let's vote on what we're here for, and that's all I have to say.
Call the question?
You want to call the question?
Yeah, ready to go.
Okay, is there a second for calling the question? All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
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 Okay, I'm calling the question. Mr. Farrington Posner?
Absolutely no.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, wait, we're calling the question for this budget?
For the budget? No, we're calling the question about...
Oh, I'm sorry, we're, I'm sorry, I'm just getting tired. Okay, on the registrar of voters.
Absolutely no.
Okay.
Yes.
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 No way.
Here's my point...
And I'm going to vote yes on that, that motion, uh...
Madam Chairman.
We're doing what we were elected to do.
Did we call the question on the amendment, which was as changed? Was there a motion about the registrar of voters?
Yes, there was.
There was.
Yes, there was.
And there was a second, yes. Okay.
Call the question, go ahead.
Question on this, on this total amendment? Is there a motion to call the question on the total, on this total amendment as amended so far? Yeah.
Ready to call the question, yes.
Okay, there's a motion from Mr. Kadim, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Yep, all opposed? We're in the middle of a vote.
Oppose, opposed, guys.
Yeah, we just did.
No, one more thing, one more, one more change while we...
He has one more change, so...
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna say no, withdraw.
I'm sorry, Brian, we had voted on the registrar.
You called, you voted, you said it was for calling the question, did you misspeak?
We walked through everything already.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did everything.
It was the, it was the registrar, you were voting, we were voting on the registrar.
20,000 dollars back.
But now you've got to vote on the item.
Oh, I'm sorry, let's vote on, okay, so, I'm sorry, the motion to call the questions passed, it's just getting late, I'm sorry. And now the motion on the registrar of voters.
We, I thought we just did that.
Mr. Kadim, and Mr. Farrington Posner?
We just did that.
We just voted on that.
They're saying that we did it, that we just voted on...
If you want to do it again, no problem, here we go.
Okay, Mr. Farrington Posner?
I get to say no again.
Yes.
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 Pass.
Yes.
Yes.
No way.
Ms. Antezza? And the chair votes yes, passes seven to three, okay.
Friends and family plan, people.
Is there a motion to ask the question, to call the question on the entire budget?
No, Madam Chair, I'd like to offer one more amendment. This is item... Item 01463, it's on the last page, 6020, fire department, fire prevention, payroll overtime. It's a negative $9,000, like to zero that out.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in, any discussion?
I have a discussion.
Yes?
So we've taken $30,000 now, or $29,000 out of the budget amended here, we need to find it. So where's it coming from, is my question, so that's just it.
Okay, that was, any more discussion on his amendment? On his amendment to remove the deduction to the fire prevention?
Right.
Mr. Chase?
Yeah, I don't think we have to find it to make it up, I think we just need to change the bottom line, the mill rate. Does Mr. Khan have?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If we pass this...
I am not voting on it, I'll tell you, if this mill rate rises, I am not voting on it, I'll let you know right now.
Scott, calm down.
Okay.
I got it.
Ken?
Are we moving, or what we doing?
Okay.
What's next?
Oh, would you like me to present the total?
Yes. No, 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 no.
We want to...
No, I thought you were, I thought you had the floor for discussion on this.
Floor for discussion, to remove the $9,000.
I thought you wanted to correct...
No, no, we're ready to move.
I apologize. That will, that will meet our goal.
I call the question on the add-back of $9,000 in line...
The fire prevention overtime.
Yeah, the fire prevention line.
Okay, all in favor of calling, is there a second for calling the question?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
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 All opposed, okay, now we're voting on the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 10 to 0.
Madam Chair, I'd like to offer an amendment to 01551, 6802, Board of Education, I'd like to reduce it by $29,000.
Second.
If it's that important, we need to do it.
Second.
That was made by Ms. Manis to reduce the funding for the Board of Education from the 1.2% that's allocated now, down even further by 30,000, by 30,000?
$29,000.
$29,000.
To cover the voter registrar and the OT for discussion.
Madam Chairman? Just clarification, you have two line items, both are 01551, 6802, the movement...
BOE cost savings adjustment, so it would add to the 1,399015, it would add...
No, I'm gonna...
An additional deduction of $29,000.
Do we have discussion?
Okay, so that was, that motion was made by Ms. Manis, and there was a, is there a second for that?
Second.
That was seconded by Ms. Antezza, discussion?
Chair?
Mr. Khan?
Yes, removing the $29,000 will bring us to a new mill rate reduction of 0.94. And that 0.94 reduction from the mayor's proposal will get us to the 38.99 of our current mill rate. So we do not need to change the Board of Ed allocation to achieve...
And Mr. Khan, if we, if we redo...
I'm sorry, through the chair, please.
Through the chair, if we reduce that Board of Ed allocation, we can still maintain the .95 reduction, correct? Which was a 38 point, it's actually a lower tax rate. I think the people are worth it, don't you, for the registrars? And the children, right? Let's do it. New total for the Board of Ed reduction would be 1,401,915, and I'm perfectly okay with that as an educator, and I think that there's more than enough money for them to deal with, when all these people, most of them, want zero, I'm sorry, they're getting something.
Through the chair?
No, wait, you were not recognized.
Of course I wasn't.
Not yet. Okay. Mr. Farrington Posner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you repeat that number again, Ms. Manis?
The new number for Board of Ed, if it passes, which it may not, that's okay, 1401915.
140, okay, right now it's at 1399015.
That would be the reduction. The reduction is 1399015.
And if you add 29,000 to that reduction?
To the, if you add 29,000 to the reduction, it would be a reduction of 1.4, 1,401915, that would be the total.
That math is actually incorrect, if you add to 1,399,015, an additional 29,000, you get 1,428,015. So I'm correct with that, right? There's a math error there. There's a math error. Thank you.
1399, oh, I read it as a nine, I'm sorry, it's getting late.
Okay, the mayor would like to be recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do not support this amendment as before as its body, I have a number of concerns that I think are overwhelmingly obvious. The lack of credibility, as far as how the numbers were put forward, it's just, right now, it's a political document to get to zero. It's more than obvious to everybody, let's just get to zero, whatever it takes, throw numbers out there. So at this time, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Chris Timiak to approach the podium, I have some questions of my CIO, to help explain to everybody, because obviously, this has been a workshop, at everyone else's expense.
Call the question.
Some people availed themselves of department heads to ask questions as far as what the ramifications would be, if there was a budget adjustment, others did not, completely up to you folks. Mr. Timiak, I'm looking at some of the changes, the Board of Ed is a big issue, obviously, some support a higher number, others support a lower one. My number was 2.35, so it was lower than some had expected, higher than others. I tried to hit a responsible number, it was a little bit above the rate of inflation, however, there's others that feel it should be higher, and others that feel it's lower. That aside, could you comment as far as the adjustments that have been made? Because what's happening is, people are pulling numbers out of the, out of the air, just to get to zero.
Right.
Just get to zero, right? What are the ramifications? Can you give us an idea?
Well, I mean, there's a couple of things, one, it's very clear that numbers are just being made up here, I can, I can validate it, and let me simply, if I can, direct a question to Mr. Khan about the workers' comp number. Where did you come up with the new adjusted cuts? You had, the document I had earlier this morning showed cuts of, you know, 25,000, the document I have at the end of the night showed cuts of 75,000. I looked at the, the... The add-on of your workers' comp, and it is 50, I mean, you've added over $250,000, it appears, just going here...
Point of clarification, there's an amendment on the floor, we should only be discussing the amendment to the Board of Education number, that's all we should be discussing right now.
No, no, I'm sorry, we're...
It's an amendment.
It's an...
We're talking about the entire amendment right now.
No, we're voting only on a $29,000 reduction to Board of Ed.
Okay, let's vote on that.
We need to vote on that.
Okay, fine. Okay, all in favor of this amendment to reduce Board of Education by $29,000 to account for other changes, say aye?
She just asked for roll call.
Okay, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Yes. Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
And the chair votes no, so that, and the mayor has to break this, oh, no, that, I'm sorry, that fails, 55.
The motion at hand, you know, we call the question on, to get started on this vote?
Okay, so you'd like to call the question on the whole amendment? Okay, so you'd like to call the question on the whole amendment? Is there a second to calling the question?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of calling the question, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, that mo, I'm sorry? Who said no?
Sorry. What are you voting on again?
We're voting on whether to call the question for the entire thing.
Aye.
Well, we just voted to call the question. Actually, I haven't announced the vote yet. So if anybody wants to withdraw their vote, they may. Anybody would like to withdraw, change their vote before I announce the vote on that? I'm changing my vote on that to a no, so that would be, calling the question would still pass nine to one. Is there anybody else who wants to change their vote for calling the question? To allow Mr. Timniak to respond? You're changing yours?
Yes.
Mr. Harden is? Okay, that's four. Mr. Young, are you changing your vote on that?
I'll change it while I'm talking.
Okay, so that motion fails to call the question at 5-5.
I believe it was six-four.
One, two, three, four. Mr. Harden, five.
Mr. Harden voted for it.
No, he changed his vote. Yep. Okay, Mr. Timniak?
Right, so, I was beginning to address my concerns of when we underfunder, underfund accounts, which we tangibly get bills to pay. And I was alarmed at the reductions I saw in the workers' comp number on Monday night. I'm more alarmed at the reductions I see right now in the workers' comp number, because it, it looked like, it appears that this was the dumping tank, where you were just pulling the money out of when you were trying to get to zero. So I, I want to know if there's anything behind, any rationale, anybody you've spoken to, to come up with an additional 225,000?
I can explain it completely.
Yes.
That is where the mayor took it from when he did the WPCA stuff. I learned it by watching him. I learned it from your boss. And that is exactly where it's coming from, and it's not changing. That's where the cash is.
No, I.
Okay, so that was Ms. Manis's response. Is there any other response to that, substantive response perhaps? No? Okay, there seems to be no response.
There was another, there's another big concern I have is the underfunding of our Anthem healthcare, our Anthem healthcare bill. This one to me makes no sense. I went and I re, reaffirmed with Anthem prior to the budget process last week. They gave me a budget number of about, I think it was 134,000 dollars. It appears that the number you have in here is 90,000 dollars above what they told me we have to pay. I, I'm, I'm missing, I'm missing where we can deliberately underfund specific bills we have coming our, our direction.
I can answer that as well.
I'm sorry?
I can answer that, because money can be moved around by a department head within a fund. So if you see an underfunding within that first line item number, you can move things around. Because, believe me, there's, we have the munis, there are sections with no encumbrances, similar to Board of Ed, where there's been no money spent in certain accounts, and things are just laying there. You can either come before the council, and we can vote to transfer it interdepartmentally, like we did when we reconciled the WPCA, or if it's within a department, like this health benefit, you can just move other things around. You have to make hard decisions. We don't want to, you know, cut every little thing. We didn't want to, we did, we did something that we thought, okay, people could move things around here. We get it. You're going to pull line item by line item out, that's fine. But the point is, is that within a department, we know that things can be moved around.
Yeah, but that doesn't answer the question. Mr. Tim, you're, you're giving a response to a problem, i, if it occurs. We're seeing that it's going to be a problem. So if you're going to move money around, where, where are you getting the money from? Where, where are you, where are you getting it?
Which line are you referring to? Let's figure it out.
Well, it doesn't really work the way how someone Manis described it. I'm looking at.
Page 26.
Page three of four. I'm looking at 01251. I'm looking at number 6053, Employee Benefits Health Insurance. There's a deduction of 225,000 dollars.
01151? What's the, what's the name of the fund?
It's Employee Benefits, it's Health Insurance. It's 01251-6053, Employee Benefits Health Insurance.
So the funded amount for 2017 was 11,400,000 dollars. The funded amount for 2016 was 10,300,000 dollars. Prior to that, it was higher. It went down in 2017. You were over, it looks like you're funding it more by 225,000 dollars for FY 2018. So why can't, what, what is, what is going on with that number with 11 million dollars?
And I, I have no idea what you're talking about when you're doing that, but I, I met with Anthem last Thursday.
Okay.
And they gave us this number. They gave me the number, which was put in the amendment to reduce it by 100. So you're creating something which you're, you're.
So you're saying.
You're making assumptions.
You're saying health insurance through the chair, 6053, correct? I want to make sure we're on the same number.
I don't have my book on right, but.
Okay.
6053, and right now, what's in this, what's in this amendment is 220, a reduction of 225,000 dollars.
Exactly. It reduces, it reduces the amount that it was funded for, for 2018, back to the 2017 funded amount.
But that's not what Anthem told us we have to pay. This is where I'm missing. Like, I'm missing what you're doing. You're re, you're telling me that's all I've got, but it's the employees, it's the employees' health insurance. It's a bill which comes in. Like, this is what I don't understand about this, how this process unfolded. Because real tangible bills are, are in this amendment, which, and I can go line by line, which are unrealistically funded, and I haven't had an opportunity to address these.
Mr. Timniak, can we go line by line and just kind of.
Madam Chair?
Pick up some of the notes as far as these adjustments, because I think everyone really needs to hear this. I think we're on to something here. Let's, uh, let's have a discussion about this amendment, shall we?
I'd like to call the question.
I second.
No, 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 Mr. Mayor has the floor now.
I do.
Oh, I called the question.
She called the question, I seconded it.
She's intro, no, I'm sorry, it was not recognized, and he has the floor.
So let's have a discussion. Let's, and, and we're going to talk our bond, about our bond rating, because we have a letter here from our consulting, talking about fund.
That you requested and it was received on May 8th.
You are not, the mayor has the floor.
Keep protecting him, Beth. Go ahead.
I'm not protecting him, I'm just trying to keep decorum in this meeting.
Trying to protect the town. Mr. Timniak, let's go, let's, let's have a discussion about the next item.
Mayor, could we continue to finish the health insurance item?
We're gonna move on.
Call the question. Well, but the point is.
The mayor, the mayor has the floor, Mr. Can.
It's an eighty-five thousand dollar difference, which is like, less than a half of a percent of your total. That may look impossible to make up, but these are claims that are going to be coming in from employees. And the frequency of those claims, and the magnitude of those claims, right, they're unpredictable. So this extra eighty-five thousand dollar take against an 11.5 million dollar pool is not that significant if, that's just one preventative, that's the, that's an MRI or something.
Mr., okay, the mayor had the floor. Mr. Timniak, would you like to respond to that?
Chris, Chris, let's, let's, let's stay on topic, okay? I, I want to hear your comments about each one of these lines that we're talking about tonight as far as making the adjustments.
Last I checked, we were the elected council. Can he call for that? I'd like an attorney's opinion.
I'm sorry, the mayor.
Does the mayor run in the meeting, or is it the council?
No, 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 the mayor has the floor.
I know, Beth, you're protecting the mayor. I asked the attorney.
The charter gives the mayor the right to speak at any council meeting.
And elongate the meeting.
To speak at any council meeting.
Why would we want to limit speech?
Attorney Leclerc, the question was called and it was seconded.
The people have a right to know. We're here to have a discussion about the future of our, of our town.
The mayor has the floor. Can we just go on with this discussion?
Yeah.
Chris?
Well, I start on, with the First Amendment, and I have, if we go to, well, the, the, you want to start with your office and, and the arbitrary payroll reduction to the employee in your office?
Oh, that's not.
No, why don't we, why don't we do this? You have this sheet. We, we have this sheet right here.
Should be eleven, ten.
Okay.
I have that sheet. So, I mean, the arbitrary payroll deduction there, didn't we just re, put money back in for an employee in the registrar's office? And I heard it's not fair to adjust someone's salary while they're currently making it. Is that employee, is he not doing a good job? I, I don't understand why we're, 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 you're saying that.
You're asking if the mayor's doing a good job?
No.
Let's ask the audience, is the mayor doing a good job?
Come on, let's do this.
I don't have that as the, I don't.
Let's go line by line.
Let's go line by line.
No, we are.
Come on, come on, guys, hold it together here.
Well, I'm under the impression that's the staff, I'm not under the impression it was the mayor, is that?
It is staff, which could have an impact on the CDBG grant, which we may end up sending back to the federal government, because we may not have somebody to manage it.
Wow, the threats come now to the CDBG.
Yeah, that, that would be, that's. He's going to give up a half million dollars.
Can we stop? Mr. Tim, Ms. Manis?
You threatened the CDBG.
Ms. Manis.
Honestly, you told me here at the last meeting, I was letting you hide, you just forgot record what an idiot you are.
Calm down.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Calm down.
Pull your jets, lady. Let's have some decorum here.
Calm, we're, we're talking about our town, can we have a discussion?
The CDBG pays 90,000 dollars of administrative fees to the town. That covers the salary of the CDBG administrator. It would not affect the mayor's office salary at all. There's no reason to threaten getting rid of the federal grant of a half million dollars.
Can I, can I say something?
Stop.
Can I say something really quickly? This is totally embarrassing. The behaviors of people taken on here, this is childish behavior. Be respectful, be mindful of people talking. Take your shenanigans out on the street. This is nonsense.
Let us call the question.
Let's move forward.
Could, could I just ask the mayor a simple question?
No, Mr. Mayor has the floor.
And it has to do with your health.
I'm trying to vet this document, and I'm being prohibited from doing it by people talking over me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Chair, I'm asking for clarification. Do I have the floor or not?
You have the floor. Ms. Antezzo, the mayor has the floor.
Okay, Mr. Timniak, next, the employee recruitment.
Well, I, I.
Let's talk about HR for a while.
Okay, well, I'd like to bring up Ron Ainge.
Mr. Ring, would you please approach the podium?
Yeah, in his department.
Just want to have explanations, so everyone knows what they're voting for, and if they have any further questions. Ron, what's the impact it will have to the 40,000 dollars that's being limited from your budget?
If we eliminate 40,000 dollars from the employee recruitment, then we cannot hire people when people retire to replace them, because you're reducing the ability to do pre-employment stuff. We just hired recently eight firefighters, 12 police officers, four different other public works individuals, and we haven't even gotten to the seasonal health for the summertime. So one of those areas is going to suffer. When you cut 40,000 dollars out, it's not realistic. If we want to provide these services to everybody, and we want to have the same amount of personnel to take care of these services.
Okay.
You need to have the budget at what we proposed. It does vary from year to year, but it's not that far off. Some years it's higher, some years it's a little bit lower. But in general, that's what the average is, and if we cut 40,000 dollars, then we won't be able to hire people to do these various jobs and functions.
No, I, I don't perceive that as a threat. Is that just what?
It's not, that's factual.
Is that, okay.
There's no money there, you can't pay for it.
Okay, how about the next line? There's a thing here, legal expenses, collective bargaining, there's a reduction of 60,000 dollars. Where's that, where's that money going to come from? Is it necessary?
Yeah, it is necessary. We just went through a recent contract negotiation that took four years, and, you know, so there's expenses to those things. We can't predict exactly how much you're going to spend every single time. We have another contract that's going on two years that hasn't been resolved. So there are legal expenses that associate to that, and if you looked at the previous history of the expenditures, when we had these bad years of, of lengthy negotiations, they far exceeded what was even budgeted. And so, you know, we're trying to maintain, my budget was basically listed as a less than zero increase this year. It's like a point one, negative point one five. To keep cutting it below zero is basically fiscally irresponsible, because you're trying to create numbers, and the, the statements of you can just move money around, I'm not sure where we're getting that from, because you can't move money around when your budget is zero or less. There's nothing to move around in that area.
Has anyone asked you the impact of these cuts?
No one's.
Prior to this evening? Okay, thanks. I, I appreciate your input.
No problem.
Town attorneys, legal fees. Chris, do you want to comment on that, or I, I know that you had talked to the town attorneys regarding their budgets?
I mean, I have, it's a simple, it.
Did you mean Chris Alson or Chris Tim?
I'm sorry, Timniak.
The, the cut is, it goes below an unrealistic number, which I already had at the line, when we proposed it in, in the mayor's budget. It's really, I mean, it's something you have to pay at the end of the day, so, and there's no words, there's no money to move that around. I mean, it's, it's a big number. In my office, the printing and stationery, I mean, that's what I print the budget books with. I mean, those are the budget books we get. The budget books you have in here, I mean, there's a printing fee to that. So, I mean, reducing that seems easy and.
Are you saying next year you're not going to be able to print budget books?
I'm saying that it's going to be harder, because there's going to be less money, so you go through here. My main issues is that these haven't been vetted with the department heads. When I met with individual members in the council, they told me the town side was fine. And that's like my big concern, and, and, you know, we obviously can go through each line item, they haven't been vetted.
Okay, that's why we're asking a question. We're going to continue. Just to get through this, I want to, I want to get all the answers from our CIO, his, his take on these things. Register of Voters, there's a payroll reduction of 30,000, and that was, that was changed, I believe, was that amended?
That was amended.
It was just amended, yeah.
All right, so that was amended. How about the 16,000 dollar cut?
Was the 16,000 dollar, I'm having a hard time keeping track.
The 16,000 dollar cut to primaries and specials.
Right.
Last year was a presidential.
I'm sorry, Mr. Timniak?
Yeah, no, and, and I don't think we had primary, a primary last year.
Yes, we did.
Oh, did?
We had presidential primaries.
Yes.
I'm sorry. But wasn't that, that primary before the end of the fiscal year?
We had primaries and special elections last year, multiple spots, we had.
Yeah, in September and October, Chris.
We'll probably have primaries this.
We've got primaries again this year, so, and, and when I met with the register of voters, they discussed that in the primary, the primary season and that money there. I don't know where the register of voters are going to get the money to hire the workers who work the polls for the primaries and the elections, which every town has, so.
That would be an interesting conversation we'll have with them. So moving on to the next item for the sake of.
But you can't lay off staff when you're required to have them by law, poll workers, to cover the polls.
Chris?
Okay.
Chris?
Guys, I'm sorry.
Stay, let's, uh, town buildings, we have postage and electricity.
I mean, I think it's reduced below the, it's a, reduced to an unrealistic level.
Okay, how about the town buildings? We'll just kind of go through all the heating, oil, water, gas, I mean, the reductions, I, I mean, it's just, is it just a, again, just, let's do a, a general reduction to try to get to zero as fast as possible without taking any history into account?
It appears that that's exactly what happened. All of those cuts are below realistic projections right now for this fiscal year. So you, I mean, you, it's so easy to cut, you know, water, gas, heating, electricity, but if we're going to be moving money around at the end of the year, where are we going to find the money to cover when you add up all of those numbers together? It's, it's just, it's, it's irresponsible.
How about the Stratford redevelopment, going on to the agencies? I see there's a reduction of 25,000. You know, the RDA has been one of the more successful committees we've had in this town as far as trying to clean up brownfields. And it's, it's not only doing that, but it's also getting rid of blight, and trying to grow our grant list. What's your take on that impact for the 20?
Again, we have ongoing projects.
Yep.
Currently, which are already tagged to this money. Like, we're, we're in the process, dealing with DEP, dealing with Economic Community Development Office, DECD in Hartford.
Yep.
So, I mean, this number doesn't appear that it was vetted at all through any of the RDA or the economic development.
It wasn't, and this is the one area, we're trying to grow our grant list, and this is actually setting, making us go backwards.
You're trying to put up a parking garage at center of school.
Okay, Mr.
And you're supporting in that, really? I'll tell your constituents, thanks.
No, I'm sorry, the mayor has the floor.
And I'll go back to the RDA. I mean, that was a number which we put in your budget, which was vetted out ahead of time, so now to reduce it by 25,000 dollars, it, it.
So trying to clean up our town is going to go backwards. So this, this will actually prohibit us from, from doing what the right thing would be, is to get rid of light, which I know, you know, Mercer Towers, and also cleaning up contaminated properties. So, okay, so that'll hinder that. All right, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, that's going to rescind their membership?
Yes, because this year our bill had to go up to 32,000 dollars per the residents in the town. Last year we had a lower fee, because we had one year free, one year half, and now it's the current bill. So that's our bill, it's 32,000 dollars. I know almost all the department heads rely on CCM. I rely on CCM to get the active information out of Hartford, and they're the ones who send me the projections from the state of Connecticut of what grant numbers we're going to be getting. I know almost all the department heads rely on CCM, I rely on CCM to get the active information out of Hartford, and they're the ones who send me the projections from the state of Connecticut of what grant numbers we're going to be getting. I have a CCM liaison who's constantly contacting me about testimony which can be submitted into Hartford legislation which is coming through, which is affecting our town. So losing CCM as a resource, again.
You belong to CCM because you're a selectman in the.
The mayor has the floor.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Madam Chairman, I have a quick question, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but when the mayor finishes his questions, can Ms. Manis ask questions?
No.
No.
No one needs to finish.
She's recognized.
It's my turn.
I think it was Ms. Antezzo after that.
So we're reducing the Raymark line by $5,000, I know we're doing the staging this year for Raymark and they're actually looking to start.
So, I mean, you make the statement that it's never, it's now in the process, I think almost everybody in the town recently got a postcard in the mail to alert everybody.
That's a $95 million project, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yep, helping to clean our town up and we're going to not be able to communicate effectively without having some funding, that's, okay, that's great. Arts Commission, we're going to give them $5,000 more on this amendment, right?
Restoring it.
And then the, it's the Stratford Army Engine Plant, they're reducing $5,000 there, aren't we trying to get that up and going also? So now we're going to, we're not interested, we talk about it, but we're really not going to support the redevelopment of the site.
Right, well, and, and again, that money wasn't vetted.
You talk about economic development, then you go the other way, you defund it.
Again, nobody asked me specifically what, where we're at with that, or how that money's planning to be spent, or anything along those lines. So, I mean, yeah, it's just $5,000, take it, but there's a project behind it.
It's not being supported, okay.
Can I just ask Mr. Timniak to clarify, when you say nobody asked you, do you mean nobody on this entire council, or do you mean the people who are proponents of this?
No, proponents of this reduction.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, planning and zoning, there's some reductions there of, let me see, $10,000, is it now?
Yeah.
Or $20,000, I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm trying to find the planning and zoning on my list.
It's right, it's right after the Stratford Army Engine Plant under Agencies.
Oh, wow, I thought it was much lower. All right, so the $20,000 payroll reduction, there was an actual, there was an actual portion of that which was in the first amendment we had tonight, which was the correct number there. The number in the first number was the more accurate of the two numbers, so I don't know why we would use that one.
Okay, and after that we have, why don't we go down to contingencies?
Sure.
Employee testing, I mean, were any of these numbers vetted?
No.
So, so none of these numbers have been tested, asked about, reviewed, thought about, let's just go to zero as fast as possible? Because zero is the number, right, but we don't want to, we don't want to worry about any of these things, so what's your take on this?
These are going to be actual bills we're actually going to have to pay.
But no one ever asked that, right, so they don't want to know the real numbers, we just plug something in to get to zero, okay.
Okay.
Do we need to have Mr. Inge comment on this at all?
On the workers' comp stuff?
Yes.
He can go over it, I mean, PMA definitely sends us a bill, we have monthly meetings with them to go over our cases.
Well, I mean, if I have a firefighter that has a claim, or a police officer that has a claim, is there going to be money to pay these claims? I mean, what, seriously, I mean, Ron, can you come forward and just?
These are big reductions.
Has anyone talked to you about these reductions, as far as the impact it's going to have on particularly former employees? That serve our, our public safety that are now randomly being selected on a hit list?
Not related to this amended budget.
Okay.
Proposal. But as, you know, as stated before, the injuries that have happened, there's, costs go up every year, you know, we have council members here who've said cost of living has gone up. Well, the doctors we send these people to get better from, you know, they get injured, they need treatment, they're not reducing their costs to us, they're increasing their costs as well. So it's a direct relation to the economy when, you know, things are going up, so we have to accommodate that. We can't say we're going to hold the same cost for, for the treatment of people when it's not feasible. So, you know, to reduce it by $75,000, that would say, because we're self-funded, then we can't pay bills again, which then impacts our employees who need the treatment to get back to work, and you can't do that. It also impacts by lowering this number, which many people don't, I'm not sure if this, this group of people here who made the amendment of the council, realize that when people go out and work as comp, they get paid tax-free dollars based on their earnings. So if their earnings get increases based on their contracts, so just say it's 2% even, that means every year they're out, they get 2% more in their salary. So when you have to account for those increases when you do your budget year every year, they're after, you can't just say it's going to stay flat when people are getting raises and you still have to count that in your workers' comp cost. It's, again, it's not responsible budgeting when you do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ring, and why are up there, how about physical exams? There's a reduction here at $10,000.
The physical exams, that's for our contractual obligations that we have, we have to do those. Again, you cut the funds for that, then we're not meeting the contractual obligation to the unions that it's applicable to. And again, physicals are going up like anything else, so you have to account for increased costs, not decreased costs in these medical fields.
So if the money's not there for physicals, what do you do? We're not doing?
Well, if we don't do them, then we violate the contract, and the union can file a grievance, then we have more legal bills. So, so I'm going to spend more money on legal fighting something that says, why didn't you fund it? When you know it's legally required. So now I'm spending more legal money that's useless that I could have put to the physicals by the time we're done.
Okay, seeing that we're on, on physical exams, why don't you stay up there? How about the employee benefits as far as, well, actually, that's more of a, yeah. Any other comments on following physical exams? Ron, do you have anything?
Not really, I mean, that's the main thing, is that it's contractually bound, and again, the costs of physicals go up, and we have to pay those things.
All right, how about the, thanks, Ron. Mr. Timniak, any comments on the financial treasurer, or purchasing, or any of the items, like tax assessor?
Yeah, they, I mean, it appears to be an arbitrary payroll deduction on the tax assessor part-time. Again, right below it, overtime for the tax assessor's office. Again, nobody asked the tax assessor how crazy you get.
Why wouldn't they not ask, any idea?
And that's what, that's what I find most offensive, is because they're professionals who work hard for the town of Stratford, who stay late nights working to get our grant list done, and to have their budgets reduced, you know, without any sort of comment, is, is offensive. And again, we worked on the numbers when they submitted them to us, and it was, again, nobody asked, so nobody knows.
So we don't really know the true impact until we talk to the assessor, because I notice there's audits in here and there's other items that can affect the way we do business in the tax assessor's office.
Yes.
Okay. All right, how about the, see, recreation, there's a cut of 5,000, that's a. See Pat Matusky's out here? Pat, you okay with that?
No.
Okay, so Pat says that's okay?
Yeah, well, I mean.
Visiting nurses, that's, that's being eliminated, short beach, outside services, education, PW, any comments on the PW reductions?
I mean, Mo can go in, but again, they're arbitrary payroll deductions, and if we're restoring them for the register of voters office, shouldn't we restore them across the board?
I don't, I don't know, I, you know, if they're just made up, they're made up, I guess.
Okay.
I mean, are you asking a question of the council, Chris?
I'm confused, yes.
Okay.
What was the question, can you repeat that, please?
If, if you're restoring the payroll for the register of voters office, and the reason cited for restoring that payroll reduction, why wouldn't you restore the payroll for all the other departments? Wouldn't the same reasons hold true?
I'm trying, I'll give a short answer. The cuts here may look like round numbers, but they were actually a delta between the prior year budget and the current year budget. And that's not perfect, and you won't find that precisely in each case, but if the budget had been running, let's say, $100,000 for three years, and then it went up to 120. So the cut would have been the 20 for the increase. Now, you likely, as you said, vetted it and said, we need extra 20.
Yeah.
And you're not wrong that in many of these cases, most of these cases, there was not a Q and A, there was not a. But that, so the source of most of these cuts were deltas between the actual trends, the current year budget, and the increases that were observed for the projected year budget.
All right, again, that's not talking to the department head to find out what they're doing. And did you not avail yourself to everyone as far as if you have any questions, contact me, come in?
Yes, and again, I sat down with Councilman Can, and he said he was fine with the town side budget. That was three weeks before we got to this point. Last Thursday, I, right, agree, you said, I mean, you did say you were fine with the town side budget, you only had enterprise funds. So, again, if I go around and I talk to the council members and they're fine with the budget, to have this surprise on me, and all of the department heads, I think is unfair to the professional level of service you, you expect from the people who are, who are running the town, so.
Are there any other concerns that you have here? Because I've got one, one last question, if you doubt, I know there's a number of things that are kind of open-ended, and we'll obviously vet them later if we need to, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's one big thing I have with the, the CIP, the CIP number, and I wouldn't mind having Renee come up to explain what goes into that number and why, why it's, it's difficult to put a number on, on what, what we have here. If you don't mind. Because this is something people should pay attention to.
What I need to know is, I don't understand what the 242614, can I have the breakout for that? To know what you're taking out and that you're anticipating moving over to bond? Because I'm not quite sure that everything qualifies to be bonded. There's, I, certain criteria and past practices that I've been taught on what qualifies for general fund and what qualifies for bonding.
It's a perfect question, it's on a broken computer inside Carol's office. Unless someone has a, there was a playground equipment was one.
I think it was, I, I know the 45,000 was the bleachers and the roof repairs, which.
So they were CIP items that were bonded through the, excuse me, to be paid for through the general fund. And the presumption was that they could be paid through bond, and we would remove other items that were paid through bond to sort of free up funds if we were worried about a maximum bond amount.
I just, I'm not sure that everything that we're saying that we can move to bond can be bonded. And the past practice and what I've learned from past finance directors, and the reason why we repeatedly put them in this was because they're not infrastructure improvements, they're small amounts, like the fire hose for $9,000, that kind of stuff are not bondable as past practice. That's the 9,000 for the fire hose, it's not part of the 242, but also.
Small items that cannot.
Sorry, it's, it's.
Sorry, I can't tell you, but that's not there.
Also, the roof repairs, it's not one roof repair for 20 or 30,000, that's roof repairs on every town building, and so it could be $1,000, it could be $10,000, so that's why that's not bonded. In fact, I just had this discussion with the Assistant Finance Director not too long ago, that any small repairs like that are not bondable items, and that's why they have to come out of the.
Even if it was a package, you, you could bond a package of expected repairs called roof, and then.
So, yeah, you would have to have identified a specific project, and it would have to hit a certain amount of a threshold, but a repair typically is not a bondable item.
So a package of repairs would not qualify as a project?
Not, it has never in my history of being here been allowed to be bonded and qualified.
And that, maybe for all of us shortly, who makes that decision on whether it's allowed? Does that come from your office, or is there a?
That comes from the finance, and when we've built the capital plan over the years, that's always been determined, and I've been instructed what can qualify and what can't. And small repairs cannot, as well as small pieces of equipment like hand radios and stuff like that, because they're, you're not, it's not an infrastructure type, and it's, its life cycle is short, and a bond is a long life cycle. And so you don't want to finance a radio for many, many, many years.
So I, so we make the decisions internally.
Bond.
Then bond counsel is, I mean, is us.
No, no, bond counsel is outside counsel.
A bond lawyer, bond attorney?
Paul.
Oh, an actual counsel, not a commission per se?
Paul Menconley, so we just follow the, you know, their guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So that's the only question I have, is I just didn't know what the, what was making up the 242, and what's going to happen is we can't bond the, the repairs to the roof. So they will have to be paid out of the general fund as the repairs come up, which there's no budget line item to cover that.
Thank you, Renee.
Madam Chairman.
It's the mayor, are you done?
No, I just wanted, Chris, any other, anything else you want to point out? And then I have one question for you after.
Yeah, no, and that's the big thing, like Renee's been doing the capital program for the town for many, many years now. We have bond counsel we rely on for these decisions. This is, this is just clearly arbitrary. I still don't know what you said is in that number, what is bondable, what is not bondable. I didn't get a decisive answer, so. I guess, like, what, who's qualified to, to move this number around if it's not our bond counsel?
Well, I think, first of all, I think this is helpful because obviously there's questions, people didn't understand what it did or how it happened, so in essence, this turned out to be a workshop. Let me ask you a question, the one thing that comes up with our rating agencies is our fund balance, it's been an issue, and here we're making arbitrary cuts to get to zero, okay? So we have a political document we're dealing with, we go to zero. What was your, what was the comment we got from our consultant that deals with Moody's and Standard and Poor's?
So, again, we hire a gentleman named Bill Lindsay, who's our bond consultant, and he deals directly with the financial companies, Moody's and Standards and Poor's. He's the one who sets up all the calls and has the ongoing relationships with the companies which, which do our bond rating. They set our bond rating, and then we go out and we bond projects like Stratford High. The last time we went through the bond calls, last November, when we were in the situation we were in, the big thing they talked about was how great it was that Sikorski came here, but they're very, very concerned about our fund balance.
So Sikorski, so how'd they do about that? So they read articles about the community, so they saw the article in the Connecticut Post, so they're aware of if there's.
They opened the conversation with a congratulations that Sikorski stayed.
Yep.
So they, they definitely did that.
So if our bond rating is, becomes more unfavorable, for example, if it goes down, what does that do to our borrowing for Stratford High School? We already know we have $2 million in debt service, is that correct, coming up next year?
Yes.
Right, so we're going to, we're already like $2 million in the hole for next year, so how, so is that going to drive the cost of borrowing up?
Yes, it absolutely is. Now, the big concern is that we have $90 million of, of bondable stuff we're going to be doing over the next three years. The reality is, we, we truly stand, an unfortunate reality of being downgraded. And it's, it's our fund balance, which is at like 3%, they want it at 5%, but as the state of Connecticut goes through their problems, you know.
Well, that's a good point, we don't even know what the state is going to give us right now.
As the state of Connecticut gets downgraded, they're going to, they're going to say, well, it comes to these towns too. So the best thing we can do is not underfund these accounts and have higher bills at the end of the day. I mean, it is, it's economics, it's math, it's a reality, it depends on whether you want to go here, but, I mean, we are going to be bonding $90 million over the next three years.
Okay, and that's just for Stratford, that's at Stratford High and other projects?
And other projects, if we continue the pace we're on right now.
So we're looking at, we're looking at a potential, not a threat, a potential, if we get a downgrade, then higher borrowing. All right, thank you, Mr. Timniak. Madam Chair, I have grave concerns, obviously, about this amendment, it was prepared this evening in a frantic rush, it was inaccurate at first, and then it was modified, so it's a living, breathing document as we sit here at this late hour. I'm concerned about our bond rating, I'm concerned about the future of Stratford, and, you know, I said earlier, you know, we're stewards of this town, we have a responsibility to govern in a responsible fashion. Not to take a political document, drive down to zero at, at everyone's expense, meaning the taxpayers. What's even more disturbing is the Board of Ed number. You know, in order to get to zero, let's just grab more money from the Board of Ed without even considering their request. We have a separate elected body down the street that vets that budget. And again, if so, if people are that concerned about the Board of Ed, run for the Board of Education. Education and go make a difference on the Board of Education and do the vetting down there. The recommendation that I had was actually lower than what the Board of Ed had recommended. The proposal that was initially brought out tonight went a little higher than I did, at 2.75. The number that's before me this evening changed by the minute. Very little thought behind it or anything, just, ah, you know, we're just, why give them anything? You know, I mean, it's, there's no rational, objective reasoning on how you got to that number. And basically, all these numbers are pretty much considered arbitrary. Department heads weren't contacted, this document wasn't vetted, we don't know what's going to happen. So, Madam Chair, with that being said, I don't know how you can vote on an amendment that's before this body, that hasn't been vetted, and you don't know the ramifications. That's us on a municipal side. I can't wait to hear what the Board of Ed has to say on their side.
Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Antezzo.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've now waited 20 minutes to talk. But anyway, as far as vetting is concerned, I really wanted to address what the mayor started with, which was the health insurance, that 6053 under employee benefits.
Missy, just call the question.
We actually looked at what had been used thus far, the munis. And last year, $11,400,000 was appropriated for that health. But at the end of last month, $1,900,000 was left, which, it isn't as if we just pulled numbers out of the sky. We checked a lot of the munis and looked at things like, for instance, heating oil on one of the, I remember specifically, here it is going into May, and the heating oil was not even used to, you know, not even, about half of it was used. So, that one item, it was easy to cut off the heating oil. But I can't say that it was not vetted. We looked through a lot of the munis of what was used to date on various line items.
Can we call the question?
Okay, there's a motion to call the question by Ms. Kadim, second, I think, by Ms. Antezzo. Okay, all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I'm going to do this by a roll call vote. We are voting on this amendment as amended. Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
Mr. Kadim?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 No.
No.
Yes.
And the chair votes no, the motion passes six to four.
Second.
Wait, 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 wait.
Madam Chairman, you just, you just voted to call a question. You didn't vote on anything, other than to have a vote.
No, no, we did do, we did, we did a voice.
We did both.
We did both.
The call and the question was...
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman.
We did both.
It's unfortunate that this passed. I would, I would urge the mayor, this is going to do serious damage to the town, not only to the town, but to the morale, to the Department of Education. I would just urge, strongly urge the mayor to veto this.
Yes, I do.
I would like to second that.
Yes, we did, Mr. Leclerc, we did the call.
There was a motion to adjourn in the second.
Wait, one second.
Wait a minute. Do you want us to vote again, Mr. Leclerc?
Huh? Now, we voted on the amendment, but now we have to vote on the budget, right?
It's on tape.
Wait, I'm sorry.
We haven't set the tax rate yet, though.
Stand at ease, one second. Yes, you did. We voted on the amendment. Okay, that was a vote on the amendment to the budget. Now, it is the opportunity to vote on the budget. Is there a motion to vote on the budget as amended?
Point of information.
Yes, Ms. Antezzo?
What amendment were we voting on?
The one we just did.
I didn't make an amendment, I just made a comment.
But it's not the whole budget, Miss. We didn't vote on the budget as amended.
That is the budget as, now we are voting on, is there a motion?
I called the question to vote on the budget. Yes, there's a motion.
Is there a motion to vote on the budget as amended?
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Point of clarification, we voted on the amendment to the budget, we voted on the budget as amended, that's what we just voted on.
No, we voted on the amendment, not the budget.
Okay, well, let's go, let's get it over.
Mr. Chase, I'm not crazy, right?
No, no, you voted on an amendment that was on the floor. You've been discussing an amendment most of tonight. At this point, you have an item as amended, someone can move another amendment, or someone can move, as someone, I think, Mr. Farrington, you just moved the item as amended, correct? Was that your motion, second ago?
Call the question.
Yes.
I think we already have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, and I said, I made that motion.
And it was seconded by Ms. Antezzo, I think, myself.
The motion was made by Mr. Farrington Posner, seconded by Ms. Antezzo.
And you're voting now on...
On the budget.
The item on the agenda, on item number 5.2.2.
As amended.
The ordinance for the budget as amended.
As amended, discussion. Mr. Timniak?
I want to...
I'd like to recognize Mr. Timniak.
You're voting on the ordinance, but I'd also like to remind you to match the mill rate which just passed to the motor vehicle mill rate before you rush out of here.
Do we have an actual mill rate that we're voting on that has been vetted? I mean, that's very, very, very important.
Madam Chairman, what I would suggest is, you can't have a mill rate unless and until you pass this ordinance, because if this ordinance passes for a certain appropriation, you have to leave the CFO a moment or two to calculate the mill rate, which is the second item you have to vote on tonight.
Right.
So, you may need to take a recess, it depends how long it takes, Mr. Wahlberg, to come up with that mill rate calculation. Maybe it'll take him a few minutes to calculate that.
All right, let's do this vote now.
First, is there any other discussion on this?
I have one question.
Mr. Antezzo?
Thank you. It's, Greg?
Yes.
We would have to replace the appropriation of the sum.
Yes.
We have to have the total, your total appropriation, whatever it was, with a couple of adds and subtracts that we had, I hope we kept...
$29,000 is the difference.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote on the budget as amended. I'm going to start with Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
Yes.
Wait, I have to say your name for this, Mr. Kadim?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Harden?
No.
Mr. Harden is a no. Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Khan is a yes. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Young is a yes.
Yes.
Ms. Antezzo is a yes.
No.
Mr. Chase is a no?
No.
Mr. Llewellyn is a no? Ms. Manis?
Yes.
Ms. Manis is a yes, and the chair is a no. Okay, the budget as amended passes six to four. Okay, now, there needs to be a recess, because the CFO needs to, the CAO and the Finance Director would need to calculate a mill rate.
What?
We don't have a mill rate.
It has to be officially calculated.
The Finance Director is compelled to discuss what was just passed, because it seems to have been an unbalanced budget, which would violate our charter. I'm sorry, we are back in session. Mr. Khan, if you could take your seat, please? So, the budget that was passed was unbalanced.
Unbalanced.
Unbalanced. Mr. Wahlberg?
Yes.
If you can explain.
Let me start off by saying that we're going to need $600,000 in support of the EMS budget, because they are running into a deficit. So, by adding $600,000 into the general fund under a transfer out to the EMS of $600,000, prior to that, the mill rate would have been 38.99. Adding then the $600,000 obligation will bring the new mill rate to 39.13.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Khan?
Thank you. Out of the $600,000, Jay, there's $365,000 because of the benefits that we just discussed earlier, and the other $240,000 or so was their negative balance for the current year.
Correct.
Zed, you have a current...
We'll have to adjust that accordingly. Obviously, we have to adjust that accordingly. I think we made some transfers, transferring expenses back and forth as part of this amendment. And obviously, they, you know, we can't be giving them $600,000 and then giving us back the money, that has to be reconciled, but...
So, that, that delta of approximately, say, 14 basis points would have occurred under the mayor's proposal or under any other amendment that was brought here tonight?
Yes, that is correct, it should, it should, it should be there, correct.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
So, Jay, we're not at zero then, so the council voted for a tax increase. Approximately how much is, is the increase, do you know? Because I'm hearing a higher mill rate than what we had, we have currently.
Well, it's going up, well, it's going from 38.99 to 39.13, so it's 14...
Okay, so taxes went up. All right, thank you.
Any other comments? I'd like to make one, it seems that, so, so, Mr. Wahlberg, we have, you had told me over the recess that we need to now amend it?
You need to incorporate it into...
To incorporate this transfer. How much is this?
It's $600,000.
Is it 600 even?
At this point, yes, it's $600,000. It's a transfer out, it's considered a transfer out. It's actually, it's in support of EMS.
Okay, would any, so, can, can we make that motion, since we've already passed the ordinance?
Madam Chairman, you'd have to reconsider what you just did, because the item's not on the agenda, this, it sounds like Mr. Wahlberg wants, do you want them to reconsider the ordinance they just passed? To make that $600,000 adjustment essentially?
Yes, to incorporate $600,000.
So, you're asking, just to be clear, what you're asking, someone to make a motion to reconsider who voted on the prevailing side, and then, once it's reconsidered, you can articulate what motion needs to be made or what specific change you need and where, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, actually, Mr. Wahlberg, I just want to be clear, when I add these two numbers, the deficit projected that was proposed for EMS, which was 246,402, plus the $364,000 in transfers of expenditures that were put on EMS, when I add those, it's actually $610,402.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, is there anybody on the prevailing side who would like to have their motion reconsidered so we could have, who would like to have their vote reconsidered so we can have a balanced budget?
I'll reconsider.
Okay, Mr. Young has asked to be, for his vote to be reconsidered. All in favor of, oh, can somebody second that, please?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harden.
Does the second need to be from the prevailing side?
Okay, all in favor of having the motion reconsidered, say aye.
What are we reconsidering?
You reconsidered the, the final vote of the budget with the ordinance, so, okay, all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion passes 10 to zero. Okay, so, Mr. Wahlberg, would you like to tell us how we do the 610, this transfer $610,402?
It's not going to change much, I'll just go to the computer now. You came up with 600?
610,402. But don't we need an organization and object number also for the transfer?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do we need an org, an org number and an object number listed in the budget for this? We're putting a new line into the budget, which is transferred to EMS, correct?
Yes, I can get that for you.
Okay. Okay, let's take a two-minute recess until we have that information.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Wahlberg, okay, we're back, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Back for recess.
Again, the appropriation would be for $610,402. The organization number would be 01560-6802. And it's a transfer out, operating transfer out to the EMS. And the mill rate will come to be...
I think that's all that we need right now, but, well, okay, the mill, I'm sorry, the mill rate would go up to...
Would be 39.13.
Madam Chair.
Okay, yes, Mr. Harden?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment. I would like to make an amendment to remove the capital equipment purchase from this, which is $242,614. Can I have a second on that?
Okay, is there a second to remove the, the amendment is to remove the trans, the deletion of the $242,000 from the capital equipment purchase? Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, discussion?
I would like to know from Mr. Wahlberg, with the removal of that 242 capital equipment, what Mr. Harden is proposing our tax, our mill rate to be, if that's possible.
Yeah, I'll have to figure that out.
That's going to be important.
Okay, I'd just like to add, Mr. Mayor? So, this was an item that we were told that we could not bond, necessarily bond these things, and...
We weren't told, but she needed to reevaluate it.
Well, we didn't know what items were in there even. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Madam Chair, could I have Kevin Giussolo from EMS come up and maybe enlighten the council as far as what this expense does?
Wait, what you're talking about? No, we're talking, what's on the floor now is an amendment for the $242,000...
This is capital, correct?
Yes, okay, I'm sorry.
$225,000.
I'm sorry, he, he has the floor now.
Kevin, could you please expand upon...
Certainly, so just to be clear, it's the EMS capital expenditure for fiscal year 1718 that's under review?
No.
No.
It's the capital equipment purchase line that was in the amended budget.
Police and fire.
It was to delete, oh, I'm sorry, it was police and fire stuff, we don't have our police officers here anymore, it's late.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Manis?
I can explain what that line item is. That line item has to do with the racquetball tennis courts, partially, part of that, with the idea that they're the only clay courts in town, residents have expressed dismay to find out that they were going to be suspension concrete. So, it needs to be more conversation with the TSA, I believe, and the people who play tennis there, because they're the only clay courts in town. That's one of the items that's mentioned in the CIP, CEP. The other items, bleachers, they're not roof repairs and roof, there's one general maintenance. So, to answer Mr. Collins' question of whether projects can be grouped together and bonded, the answer is yes, because there's many of them in the CIP, I've seen them myself. So, I, I think, you know, and not, without speaking out of turn about it, those things are bonded in here, they are part of the CIP, so they, and they are bonded, so...
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Antezzo?
I have a question of Mr. Harden, if he could just give us the org number and the object number, the line item number.
Thank, okay, thank you, Greg, for giving me that clarity. It's going to be 01201, and then it's going to be 6742.
Oh, oh, oh. Okay.
Okay, is there any more discussion on this item?
Mr. Wahlberg has the new mill rate number.
No, I'm sorry, no, Ms. Manis, is there any other discussion on this item?
Mr. Wahlberg has the new mill rate number, I'd like to know what it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yes.
Yeah, by incorporating that, the new mill rate would be 39.18.
39.18, if we voted on that. But that, that item, the plan is to bond these things and just pay interest on it.
39.8.
Okay, being no more discussion, let's vote on this one amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Farrington Posner?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Yes, Mr....
By incorporating that, the new mill rate would be 39.18.
39.18, if we voted on that. But that item, the plan is to bond these things and just pay interest on it.
39.8.
Okay, being no more discussion, let's vote on this one amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Farrington Posner?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Yes, Mr.?
We're voting on the amendment.
The amendment.
No.
For EMS, correct?
No, no, wait, reconsider the vote, probably.
Ms. Antezzo?
Excuse me, we have to be clear, you were saying that the money for the EMS to be put back?
No, this is...
I'm sorry, we're in the middle of a vote.
Yeah, well, I reconsidered my vote because I...
I will clarify what it is. It's a vote, it's a vote on item number, if you go to your budget here, that was proposed, the amendment, it's on the top of page three. It's item number 012016742, capital equipment purchase, bond via CEP, offset by CIP.
No.
Okay, excuse me, what, what mill rate did you say this would cause?
36, 39.18.
No, 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 folks, folks.
We're in the middle of a vote.
Madam Chairman, if I could clarify, that's not correct. You're voting on an amendment right now to do two things. Part of the amendment is to amend line 012016742, debt retirement, capital equipment purchase of 242,614 by no longer deleting it...
Right.
From the budget. You're also voting on the addition of line 015606802, a line for 610,402, as Mr. Wahlberg requested.
Have to do them separately, you can't do them together.
There was one amendment made for both of them, which was moved and seconded, that's why you're doing it this way.
It was broken down and when it was discussed, it was explained that EMS would get the 600...
We're already in the middle of a vote.
No, and I understand what's being said, but I'm saying you don't lump them together, they wasn't lumped together.
Is there a motion to separate the question?
Yes, please.
Okay, is there a second? To separate the question?
Second.
Who seconded that, Mr. Chase? Okay, all in favor of separating the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that passes 10 to 0. Now, we are voting on the motion, on the part of the question, which is only the EMS transfer, okay? Mr. Farrington Posner?
No. Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Khan?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Yes.
Yes. No.
And the chair votes yes, the motion passes 6 to 4.
Question.
Now we are voting...
I, could, Jay, please tell us what the new mill rate would be under those conditions?
Under the EMS, if we were just to pass the EMS...
Yes.
That would be 39.13.
39.13?
Correct.
That's what just passed.
With the motion we just passed.
Yes.
With the motion you just passed. Thank you.
Okay, now, the next motion is to delete the deduction from the capital equipment, which is, which amounts to 242,614 dollars, and it's 012016742, okay? Now, I will do a roll call though, and that also, Mr. Farrington Posner?
No.
No.
Yes. No.
No.
Oh.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
And the chair votes yes, and that fails, I believe that fails 6 to 4, okay?
So, Madam Chairman, you now need to get from Mr. Wahlberg, before you vote on this item, the ordinance as amended, the correct amount, last time it was 216,195,361. I believe you want to add 610,402 into that number now, correct?
The new mill rate.
Not the mill rate, we're not there.
No, 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 the new expenditures.
Bottom line appropriation.
The appropriation.
That's the number we need next.
I'm sorry, what was the first number you had?
I believe the number you voted on already was, originally, it was 220,358,957, but you added it, I'm sorry, you reduced it by 4,163,596, leaving you a annual operating budget of 216,195,361 dollars. And now you have to take into account what Mr. Wahlberg is doing.
Well, just...
What, the number you just, the 610,402, I believe.
Okay, I just want to ask first, are there any other amendments that anybody would like to offer on this?
God, no.
I know.
Just do it.
It won't pass.
Might as well try.
Go ahead, I'll vote with you.
What was the number, 600 with EMS? 610,000? 610,000? Yeah, okay, I'll make an amendment. While we're...
I'm sorry, Mr. Farrington Posner is offering an amendment to this.
Oh, come on.
Amendment to, to, I'm sorry, an amendment, 610,000, how much was the total number? Well, I think we've already been there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yeah, okay, I make an amendment to add to the reduction of the Board of Ed, item 0, I'm sorry, org 015516802, Board of Ed, cost savings adjustment, 610,000, added to the 1399015.
Okay, is there a second for reducing the BOE budget to, by 610, I'm sorry, can you repeat those numbers? I lost them in my books. I'm sorry, could you repeat the number that you want to reduce it by?
Do you want to...
An additional 610,000 on, yep. So that was, 610,402.
It's to the 1.399015, you're adding it to...
Yep, adding that to the deduction of 1399015, and I don't have a calculator to get the total out right away.
Okay, is there a second for taking out another 610,000 for, 610,402 dollars from the Board of Education budget? That was seconded by Mr. Kadim. Is there discussion on this? Mr. Chase?
This is ridiculous.
It is, and it's children's lives.
Yeah.
I have three of them, I understand.
I've got the floor, sir. I would oppose this amendment. I would oppose this proposal, further reduce the Board of Ed budget. I know what the mission is here, it's they're determined to get to a zero increase, and they will do anything they can, doesn't matter if they, you know, we have to close schools or lay off teachers, doesn't matter, as long as they have that zero tax increase that they supported wholeheartedly during their elections, without any concern about what the real issues are facing this town.
Madam Chair?
I'd like to speak, really, if I may hand up. I would just say that there were many people who sat around the table with the original amendment who had zero and compromised on this, on this fact, some of them, you know, with, had children and with children, and I believe in the numbers that were presented, and I know that the number that we gave last year, any amount even over that, is more than other councils gave to the Board of Ed, because dollars on that percent is a lot. It's a lot. We gave a huge increase last year. The Board of Ed needs to edit its garden, its time, they're not going to grow. And so, this was part of the issue, this was part of the conversations, this is one of the reasons it took so long, and I think people need to just stay where they stand.
All the questions.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to call the question.
Okay, is there a second to calling the question? All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are voting on this amendment, which is to reduce the Board of Education allocation even further by 610,000 dollars, introduced by Mr. Farrington...
He's got the other numbers there, 40...
Yeah, Madam Chairman, the motion Mr. Farrington Posner made was to reduce line 015516802, Board of Ed, cost savings adjustments. You had a reduction of 1,399,015. He's proposing to increase that reduction by 610,402 dollars for a total reduction on that line of 2,9417 dollars.
That, that's not... Is that correct?
Is that right?
2,900, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? 2 million...
2,9417 dollars.
417?
1399015 plus 610402, if I did the math right.
Okay, so from the mayor's budget, you want to take, he wants to, so another 2 million dollars will be, will be removed for education from the mayor's budget. That was, that was a second, okay, all of, I'm sorry.
A total of...
Yeah, a total of 2 million will be removed, and that was seconded by Mr. Kadim. Okay, all in...
Roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
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 I'm abstaining, I can't even bring myself to vote on this.
I'm sorry.
You don't have to. You've got enough votes.
You can abstain, do you have a reason to abstain? Do you have a conflict of interest?
No, I just...
Okay, Ms. Manis?
Count it as a no.
Ms. Manis?
I'll vote with you, Scott, yes.
Okay, and you're supposed to know, Mr. Llewellyn, and the chair votes no, that fails 7 to 3. Okay, there were three votes for that. Okay, now we are back to the, so now what is our new mill rate?
Do we have to figure, and could we just vote? I don't care.
Are you kidding me?
Spent the whole night fiddling around.
I'm sorry, we haven't voted on the whole budget again. Are there any other amendments that anybody else would like to offer?
Yeah, we have to do that. We have to, whatever this is.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, no more amendments.
Okay, no more amendments? Okay, then I'm going to call the question here. Mr. Farrington Posner, this is a vote on the budget as amended with the mill rate increased to 39.13. Mr. Farrington Posner?
No.
Yes.
No.
I apologize, the motion, can you read it?
This is, we are voting on the whole budget as amended with the mill rate increased to 39.13. Oh, I'm sorry, we can't vote on this yet.
I'm doing it. I said no increase. Yeah, plus, plus the, while we're waiting, once you add the EMS negative balance, the mayor's budget's over 40 mill rate. The mayor's budget is over a 40 mill rate, once you add the EMS.
No.
That's on the mayor.
God.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, no, no.
Wait, wait, we have to have a budget May 12, and he's just getting, and the finance director is simply getting the...
Second.
Excuse me.
Hmm? What, Scott?
Reconsidering the vote.
Withdraw, withdraw the motion, Tina.
Mr. Town Attorney, motion to adjourn has been made and seconded.
Okay, all in, I have to bring it to vote, all in favor of adjourning then? Say aye.
Are they working on this, or is this going to take over?
Yes, he is.
There was a motion to adjourn that was, that was made and seconded.
I'll withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, Mr. Wahlberg?
Okay, the total appropriation for the upcoming fiscal year 2018 is 216,805,763 dollars.
63?
63.
216815763.
805.
Eight, isn't that, I'm sorry, 216805763.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and that would, that would give us an increased mill rate to 39.?
Yes, 39.13.
Okay, okay, is there a motion to vote on the budget as amended?
Motion.
Okay, made by Mr. Khan, seconded by Ms. Antezzo. Okay, discussion, okay, but roll call vote.
Can I ask a question? Why was it a discussion with 40? Why did you say it was going to go up to 40? Is that going to happen after, or what?
No, no, that was, that was the mayor's original budget, if you add in the...
Oh, okay, I just heard a conversation, I didn't understand, all right. So we're voting on 39.13 in this appropriation?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Mr. Farrington Posner?
No.
It's a no, Mr. Kadim?
He's confusing me, start over, because I was...
We're just voting on the budget as amended.
Taxes. No.
Mr. Harden? Mr. Khan? Mr. Khan?
Pass.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Antezzo?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
He votes raise taxes.
Mr. Chase?
I'm voting no, I'm not raising taxes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
I'm voting no.
I'm voting no.
And who passed? Mr. Khan, you passed.
No.
You're voting no, and the chair votes no, that fails, that budget fails 8 to 2. Okay, now, would you, would you like to adjourn to another day and time? It is seriously late.
Oh, I forgot. I motion to adjourn.
To, to a date and time?
I would like to know when Mr. Young is, and Mr. Kadim are going to be available, because no, Mr. Kadim is working and Mr. Llewellyn is not available.
So, so when is, when is the appropriate date?
I have one other alternative, is, wait, what's on the floor now? What's on the floor is now the mayor's budget unamended. Is there a motion to, to vote on the mayor's budget without any amendments?
A point of order, I thought we had a motion to adjourn till Friday.
No, there was no...
No, it was not a date, it was a date undetermined, because we have to find out when folks are available.
Is there a motion to vote on the mayor's budget unamended?
Madam Chairman?
No.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chase?
I would vote to adopt the mayor's budget.
Without any amendments, is there a second to that? Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded, discussion?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
This amendment, or, excuse me, this budget...
Mr. Chase has the floor, if we could be quiet.
Unamended budget provides adequate funding for the Department of Education. It's the 2.35 that the department feels they can live with. It protects the town, and it protects the town from these harsh cuts that have been previously proposed. It provides safety for our citizens, and I know it's late, I won't talk any further, but I would urge my colleagues to vote this, vote for adoption of this budget.
A 39.93...
I'm sorry, that, that was, he made the motion, is there, and there was a second? I'm sorry.
Yes, it was.
There was, and this, I'm sorry, we're in discussion, Ms. Manis?
I have a question. Does that 39.93 mill rate that Mr. Chase has encouraged us to vote for include the EMS transfers? Or will it go higher?
It'll go to 40.01.
Mr. Chase, how could you vote, how could you support something that goes over 40 mills?
I'd like clarification from the...
There's no way.
Mayor's staff.
It's the mayor's budget unamended, and I believe the mayor's budget unamended has a mill rate not below 40.
It's 39.93, but then the infusion of the EMS stuff.
Right, are you making an amendment to his budget?
No, I'm asking a question. The EMS transfer that had to happen to balance the budget, is that going to have to happen again?
Ask for the mo, ask for the motion to amend, and then we'll see what it is.
Ask for the mo, ask for the motion to amend, and then we'll see what it is.
Okay, motion, motion to amend, I guess.
Okay, and how are you amending the agenda? Amending the budget?
Six-hundred-and-ten-four-oh-three.
Madam Chair, I have a question, please. Was, didn't we just pass a budget?
No, we...
No, you just did not pass.
No, I'm saying the, the budget that we just went through.
You voted in the affirmative on a budget, there was a motion to reconsider. The motion to reconsider was granted. An amendment was made, that passed. A second amendment was made, that failed. You voted on the item as, as amended, following reconsideration, that failed. So, now, you have the original item back before the body again, which was the mayor's budget, two-hundred-and-twenty-million-three-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven, has been moved and seconded, and now you're discussing that.
I'm sorry, and it...
You passed the other budget.
It's moved by Mr. Chase, it's seconded by Mr. Harden. Any more discussion? Okay?
No, I was waiting for, for response from the department.
Is there a response from the department on this, please?
If you go into the mayor's original budget, which was proposed on March 12th, it, it's included, right? Yeah. The transfer was two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, so the amendment...
Chris, if it was included, then how come you took the whole six-hundred-and-ten out of this? If it already included the two-hundred-and-forty-something? Well, that's what we heard. We heard that the EMS deficit was approximately two-hundred-and-forty, plus the three-hundred-and-sixty-five from the benefits, adding together, they added up to six-hundred-and-ten. So, either, either the mayor's budget didn't have it in it, or we adjusted tonight's budget too aggressively.
What you just described, I was, um, involved.
Right. This has nothing to do with the EMS personnel or staff. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, uh... No, I have to go back and, I have to trace the, uh...
Yeah, go ahead.
When the budget was submitted to the mayor for consideration, we included a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar transfer to the general fund, which was a reduction from the four-hundred-thousand dollars.
True.
That left us with a net difference, I believe, in the ballpark of about two-hundred-and-forty-thousand. When this council added the amendment to include all the benefit packages, which the mayor's budget did not include, that increased the deficit to six-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, which was what failed in motion. So, that answers that.
Yeah, we, so we said the same thing. So, if the six, two-hundred-and-forty was already in the mayor's budget, and we were adjusting the mayor's budget, why did we take it out a second time?
Because he felt like... Seems arbitrary.
Okay, we're talking about, we're talking about the mayor's budget now.
Mayor, why, why, you know the answer, Mr. Mayor?
I'm having a hard time processing and keeping up with this, like, I'm, like...
Chris, you're doing a great job. You're a great person.
I second that.
You can't help but be bothered. You're doing good.
Can I have a minute to...
Absolutely.
It's getting seriously late, people. Or it's getting seriously early.
I'd like to give Mr. Chase the opportunity to withdraw that amendment. I know you want to pass the budget, but obviously, the mayor has inconsistencies, and has it clearly...
It's not an amendment, he, he's actually, he made a motion to, for the mayor's budget unamended.
I think, I don't, I know Mr. Chase. Listen, I know Mr. Chase, and I know he wants to do the right thing, and he wants to pass with the charter, and I hear Mr., see Mr. Florrick's face. I get it, guys, but obviously, we're dealing with a whole different beast with this folk over here. So, let's get it together, let's work together, let's straighten it out. I don't want that funny business in our town anymore. We got to get together, and you know what?
Chair.
Let's figure it out.
Mr. Khan?
Thank you. So, the message you gave us earlier was we had to account for the deficit in the EMS, and that was correct, and we just went through that. So, we, that same deficit has to be recognized in the mayor's budget, either through an amendment, I mean, or they'll tell us that it's already in there, and if it's already in there, then you overcharged, if you will.
I didn't overcharge.
Well, they, not you personally, but...
It's not your fault either, it's their mistake.
There is, though, on page seventy-six, a projected deficit for EMS, and we are supposed to have a balanced budget. So, that money needs to be covered somehow.
Oh, agree, agree, but you can't cover it in one budget, but not cover it in the other budget.
I under, I hear what you're saying.
All right.
But if, to come up with two-hundred... Okay, Mr. Ring?
The Medicare, the Social Security, the health insurance for EMS is in the mayor's budget under the general fund. The amended proposal of, of a budget that was done by the four sponsors, remove the three-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand from the town's budget, the mayor's proposed budget, and then put it to the EMS enterprise fund. So, the mayor's budget that was submitted included that three-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars already, because the sponsored people took it from there. So, it's always been in there. It's not an additional to what he put in here.
Can I just clarify what the problem is, what the question is? EMS already had a projected deficit of two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars. In the last budget that we just voted down, we, to balance it, that money that you're talking about was added to the two-forty-six, which got us up to six-hundred-and-ten-thousand.
That is correct.
So, I think the question isn't about the benefits, it's about the two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-dollar deficit that's originally in the mayor's budget. How is that covered?
Okay, that's what I want to make, because I thought we were talking about six-hundred-thousand dollars originally.
Yeah, no, 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 we're talking really about the two-forty-six.
Okay, so the remaining, so that, so we all understand that the health stuff and all that related stuff is in the mayor's budget, we're just worried about the two-forty-six. Okay, thank you.